Oh, second. Oops, sorry. Did I beat ya?
Speaker, all thanks to the people who probably hear me. So you said approval of consent agenda?
Yes, please.
Approval of the minutes from eight twenty-six twenty-two-four and eight thirty twenty-two-four. Approval of payroll totaling two-hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand dollars, two-hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand, sixty dollars and fifty-one cents. Approval of accounts payable totaling five-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars and twenty cents. And approval of July financials.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Public comments. Let me express to... We want everyone to comment tonight, and we want everyone to remain professional, calm. I'm talking to me, too. I'm talking to Cliff, and I'm talking to Brandon. I'm talking to the audience. Just to keep this conversation professional, please, because I know we have a lot of different opinions. And I know the solar panel has a couple, two or three items on the agenda later, but I can see it blending into the public comments. So who's first?
Clint Walker.
Clint Walker.
Yep.
Good evening, Mr. Walker.
Good evening, commissioners. I appreciate the time to speak, and the only thing I have to speak about is we have a gentleman that passed away this past week. He worked for the county for forty years, Mr. Tommy Johnson, and I think the county needs to let everybody know that happened. The second portion of that is, is my fifty-year class reunion went off well, and nobody got thrown in jail. And so there you are. I don't know who all them old people were, but...
I hope he wasn't telling them Arkansas jokes.
I did tell them that.
Okay.
Didn't throw me out, though.
Who's next?
A Monty and a...
You'll probably butcher it, and people have done worse.
Okay.
Thanks.
Carricker?
Yes.
Good evening, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening to you.
I'm not too good off the cuff, so I wrote some things down. Good evening. My name is Monty Carricker, and I'm a cattle rancher in the far western part of the county in Marion Township. I retired from the Navy in two thousand twelve and became a cattle rancher. It's a tough job, and it pays a whole lot less than what I thought. And when I was in the Navy, I thought, man, I didn't know a thing about cattle. I thought, grass goes in the front, and manure comes out the back, and beef happens in the middle. Sounded like passive income. I was wrong. You folks do this for a living. I appreciate you. So I'm blessed for what I do. I'm grateful to God, and I'm grateful to the U.S. taxpayer for my military retirement. It makes ends meet for us. Most ranchers my size have to work a full-time job and then come home to another full-time job. So again, I humbly thank all of you. Now, we've been approached by several solar developers, and we have always refused. I'm a very conservative political person, and I've read that there were dangers of heavy metal contamination and groundwater pollution. I was concerned about that, and I also had always heard that this industry is bankrupt without subsidies anyway, and I didn't want to support that. I shared concerns as many people have about the fires. I mean, heavy metals obviously burn along time. It's hard to put out. I was concerned. So what I did, because I believe in fairness and truth, is I set out to both read the other side of the story and to firm up my own case in case I needed to argue on the matter later. I wanted to be informed. So I began with my first point, my first concern, which was the heavy metal pollution. I was especially concerned with the hexavalent chromium and the cadmium. So I knew I needed reputable sources, not just Facebook memes or hearsay. So I went to the U.S. Energy Information Administration, and there I read that hexavalent chromium has not been used in solar panels for years, and that cadmium is present, but in levels far below what is harmful to human beings. That's from the U.S. government. Point two, I was worried about groundwater. I don't want my place contaminated with some sort of poisonous groundwater. I managed to find one case where a solar construction site didn't control their storm runoff sufficiently, and it contaminated a neighbor's pond. I found out that they contaminated it with dirt. Dirt. No heavy metals, no toxins, just storm runoff, like every other time it rains on a construction site. If they'd have been building an orphanage next door, the same thing could have happened. Any construction site could have done this. I found no other evidence of groundwater contamination from any sort of a reputable source. And the company fixed the storm runoff problem, by the way. Point three, subsidies. I went back to Uncle Sam for Dad on subsidies, and I confirmed solar arrays receive just under ten billion dollars a year for this terrible, unsustainable industry. And then I found out that agriculture receives twelve-point-six billion. So I couldn't quite say that I support farmers while cursing subsidies. I also found that eighty percent of the solar arrays in Europe are operating without subsidies at a profit. It was a matter of sometimes certain technologies need a boost before they can get off the ground. Literally happened with airplanes. We couldn't fly across the Atlantic on what the Wright brothers built. It's the same case. Point four, the fires. Now, I considered this was my strongest objection. Solar arrays, like anything else, can and do burn, but what would the effects be? So I found several examples of doomsday predictions of what could happen if there was a fire. But one that seemed particularly compelling was written by a professor out of North Carolina. I was challenged to read it, so I did very closely. And I found that what was in that paper was the same thing as I found in all of the other ones. Doomsday dire predictions of what could happen. But I never found a single example of where a solar array fire started, caused air contamination that hurt anyone, groundwater contamination. I just couldn't find it. Now, I did find that there were solar fires where people had to be locked down in their homes to avoid toxic fumes, but the toxic fumes were from burning plastic, not from the heavy metals. That could happen in any fire. All fires are toxic. A grass fire is toxic. If you stand in front of it and breathe it. It seemed like it was a case of the poison was in the dose, and it was more fear-mongering. So at that point, I felt that my case against solar had collapsed, and I signed up. Now, the company approached us to enroll nine hundred acres of land. I was not yet sold, but we were so desperately in need of the financial help that I signed up three hundred acres. Since then, I've been called a greedy SOB. I've been accused of worshiping at the altar of money. So to the folks who oppose this, I want to say this. If you genuinely believe that these things are harmful to you, if you genuinely believe that, I sympathize with you. I don't think you're right, and I welcome conversation with you. I'll sit down with you, and I'll share my sources, and I'll look at yours, but I bet mine are better than yours. And at one time, there was a meeting in Mapleton regarding the Pike Reservoir. Now, I don't live in Mapleton. I don't own land in that floodplain. But I went up, and I spoke on behalf of the concerned citizens of Bourbon County property rights. Now, I did that not because I think the reservoir is a bad idea. I think it's a great idea. It would really help this area. But the way they were trying to do that was deceitful. They were lying to people about their intent, and they were lying to people about the methods that they were going to use to get it done. So I spoke in all of your favor, even though I didn't oppose that reservoir. I did it because I wanted to protect your freedom the same way I did for twenty years in the military. Now I find myself standing here to protect mine. So, like I said, I would welcome conversation with those of you who actually want to have a conversation. But it seems like every conversation I've tried to have has started with an accusation of me being a greedy land baron. So though my financial situation is none of your business, I'm going to share it to make a point. I was blessed enough to marry a woman who inherited three thousand acres of land, the worst land in Bourbon County. It nets, on an average year, it nets fifteen dollars an acre of profit. By the time we pay the taxes, fix the fences, keep the brush back, and maintain the land, it's fifteen dollars an acre. Now, that's easy math. Three thousand acres times fifteen. I make forty-five thousand dollars a year on land that's worth ten million. Now, you tell me, if any of you folks, honestly, I could take that land and sell it for its value, put it in a CD, and earn five hundred thousand dollars a year. But we keep doing it because we love the land. We want to keep it, and we love what we do. But here's what you folks need to understand while you're accusing everyone of being greedy, worthless, all the things I've been called. Everyone has a story, and everyone has a reason for doing what they do. I have a ten-year-old granddaughter who was born with the most rare form of muscular dystrophy in the world. Her facial muscles are paralyzed. She's confined to a wheelchair. She can barely lift her arms, and it's only getting worse. She's never even smiled. I've never even seen my baby smile. Now, I know what's ahead. Millions of dollars. Millions of dollars of care for that child. All right? I don't have the money, and I can't do it on forty-five thousand dollars a year. So we either sell our place, in which case, who do you suppose is going to buy it? It's going to be some hedge fund or some foreign investor, and then you're going to have a neighbor you never even talked to or meet, and that doesn't care one bit about you. Now, like I said, I was empathetic to you folks' situation. I understand you don't want to live next to these things because you don't like the way they look. All right? Many of you, that's your reason. The other reasons that you're hollering about and saying they're unsafe, well, you're talking out of both sides of your mouth, because I've heard you folks say that these are unsafe and dangerous, and then I've heard you say, well, we shouldn't be putting them on farm ground. We should be putting them... We should be putting them on these roofs, right? We should be putting them on car parks and places like that. So you folks would happily expose thousands of people to these dangers, but not you. But not you. You just don't want it in your backyard. You're okay with them in town, but you're not okay with them next to you. Well, that's not very... It's not very neighborly, you know? So I just want to impress upon you folks. To the commission, these petitions that are going around, I reviewed them. These folks are saying that they want common sense concessions, and they just want some consideration. But every one of the concessions they're looking for in these petitions would kill this project. It would kill it. You know, if you put the batteries outside of the county, now they have to run the power lines to the batteries. But yet, they're saying that they don't want power lines. They want a fifteen-hundred-meter setback for power lines, arrays, batteries, everything. Well, why don't you guys say a mile? I think you won't say a mile because you know the average American don't work in meters. And you know that no one's going to believe that you deserve an unobstructed view of anything you don't like for a mile.
Sir, five minutes?
Yeah.
Well, I didn't time you, but we probably... I'm not going to time anybody, but we need to move along, please.
Okay. I appreciate that. I thank you for your time. I just ask you all for your consideration.
I didn't time you. I don't plan on timing anyone. But thank you for... That's a lot of good points. Thank you. Thank you very much, sir. Who's next, Clifton?
Mike.
Hello, Mike. Good evening. How are you, sir?
Doing good. You?
Yeah, I'm good.
Can we... Hang on a second, Mike. Can they... We are either going to have to shut the door?
No, we can't shut the door because the number media...
I understand that.
We can't hear them. We can hear them. We can't hear them. Thank you, Clifton.
It's a lot of noise, and people are trying to talk.
You had a four-minute...
Okay, Mike.
Okay. As you know, I'm Mike Wonderly. A few weeks ago, this county commissioners asked for volunteers for a committee to make some recommendations on setbacks. One of the requirements was to be impartial. A lot of people did not volunteer for this because they knew they would not be impartial, me being one. We've got two landowners, the largest landowners in this solar issue, that are on that. My question is, how can that be impartial? I know we've got a couple of landowners that are adamantly against it. That's not impartial either. Having said this, and there's lots of other reasons that I think this should be tabled, is this decision is going to impact generations to come. Myself, maybe not so long. My grandson, a long time. And for this reason, having said this, I would ask this county commission group to table a vote of any kind on setbacks until the next commission is seated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Hoyt.
I saw him already. Oh, there he is.
And now for something completely different. I read in the newspaper, and it was confirmed from the budget discussions, that we've cut the Meals on Wheels and the Area Agency on Aging by fifteen hundred dollars. We didn't approve their request. We didn't cut it.
We didn't cut it. We didn't give them an...
We didn't approve their increase.
Yes.
Okay. You know, that's one of my pet peeves, is Meals on Wheels and the Area Agency on Aging. They do a lot of good work for the elderly people in this area. But it disheartens me whenever we come before you and point out a expenditure wherein one day an elected official spent seven hundred dollars at Sharkies, that's half the amount of those increases, and we wrote it off well, though you've already paid it, so we're not going to do anything about it. This is on you, not you. You got from the auditors a letter that said you needed to get your credit cards under control. You still need to do that. The way that accounting took place was also illegal, and your counsel can chime in here. Funds were taken from the diversion funds, and those cannot be spent on cocktails and bouquets. A credit card policy needs to be put in place, and I'll give you a couple of examples. Private industry. If you entertain two or more people, you have to submit with your charge who all you entertained. And if you're entertaining in town, you have to get prior approval. We need some more control out of taking a group of whoever to Sharkies and spending what totaled up to be seven hundred dollars and some flowers. And it's not too late to fix it. We need to charge it back and correct the illegal charge to the diversion fund. Shouldn't have been charged there. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next, Clifton?
Pete.
Pete, you're next.
Okay.
Good evening.
I've got some questions. I'm going to read them to you so we don't have any arguments or rude behavior or anything like that.
Thank you.
I would appreciate it if you guys would just hold off, and I'll hand you... I'll have Brandon the questions at the end.
Thank you.
All right. Here's some county business, as I have every time I've been here. First, you had a special meeting on August thirtieth. In this meeting, you had two executive sessions and approved outside counsel for two matters. When will the public be informed about this?
You told me not to answer to your gun.
Okay, okay. All right. Second, solar. San Diego gas and electric battery storage facility fire in Escondido, California burnt for three days, prompted school closures. According to NBC Seven out of San Diego, the city issued a lawful order to leave now. This area is closed to public access. There is an immediate threat of life. So evidently, there are some toxins and everything in the solar panels and the lithium batteries and everything else. Can this happen in Bourbon County with the solar storage facilities we're going to put in? How do you know if it won't? Is our volunteer fire department prepared, or can they... Do we have enough people in volunteer fire department to fight a grass fire? The third thing is August nineteenth. In the meeting, Jim made a speech about rude behavior, which I'm assuming is about me.
No, it's about me. It's about Clifton. If it's about you, it's about everybody. I'm going to answer that one. I can give you a list of that people who was...
I was going to... I'm just kind of defending myself on that. I've only responded in kind to the remarks that were made to me, and I've only talked about county business that has a major impact on the people of this county. I've not discussed my family or fishing or anything else like that. I've stayed with the county business. I believe in the constitutional right of free speech, as does every citizen of this county. And if I don't have the ability to have free speech, that's in the Bill of Rights and the Constitution, I believe. And I don't know... Maybe you can explain to me how that all works. And here's a copy of these questions. I'll step back so we know.
You have a couple more copies, Pete?
Yeah.
You want to answer, Clifton?
Yeah, August thirtieth. It's an internal matter dealing with... To discuss personal matters, individual and non-elected personnel, to protect their privacy, that's just that. You know, you can't... We... You know, you may not ever know on that, just because it's protecting somebody that's an employee. It's not one of us. So if it's dealing with us, it's kind of open book. If it's dealing with one of our employees, I mean, we can't tell you. So that's just the reality of the situation. Doesn't matter whether it's me or... I saw David Beerbar here. It doesn't matter if it's me or them in January. If they do, I'll be the first one here, turn them into the Attorney General. Okay? So that's just the way that is unless somebody else has a different opinion on that.
That's facts.
I mean, we can't say who's involved. All we can say is we had to hire outside counsel because the county counselor is... I don't know how to word it, but he's...
Well, it's no different we've done in the past. He can't do those internal investigations.
Correct, because he's already an employee of the county, so he can't do it. So we had to hire...
So the outside...
Go ahead.
So is the outside counsel... Who are they investigating? The county?
Personnel matters.
Investigating certain people?
Personnel matters to protect their privacy.
That's all we can say.
That's all we can say, Pete, really. I mean, it's...
And by bringing in someone like that, it's an outside review, independent, to make sure there's no partiality here.
Ideally, it's unbiased.
So it's the best thing that we could have done.
I understand that, but it's a... I mean, that is still...
What you should be mad about is it's a... I mean, I can say this. It's an absolute, in my opinion, unnecessary expense to this county. So... But that's all we can say. I mean, it's just it. We can't say... No. Anyway, it is what it is. It is. We went into executive session to discuss personnel matters of individual, non-elected personnel to protect their privacy.
So basically, your answer should be it's an individual...
I can answer what I just read by pointing to the Attorney General.
You want to comment, our counselor?
That's all I can answer. That's literally all I can answer. So solar fire in Escondido, California, the battery fire in Escondido, California, or however you say that, there was... And, you know, the article, I read it today because I assumed it would come up more than one, actually, and there's zero toxic fumes.
There ain't no way that's possible. Just so... There's no way that the fumes are non-toxic.
That's your opinion?
So what you're saying...
No, I'm not...
No, 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 no. Let me finish. So what you're saying is that San Diego County, whoever... Their people don't know what they're doing?
No. What I'm saying is there's no such thing as a non-toxic fire.
A grass fire is toxic.
Right.
Well, they said there were zero toxic fumes.
And as far as... I'll go deeper into the fire, the solar fire.
So...
I do know that one of the solar developers has been talking to one of the fire chiefs, the District Three Fire Chief. I have put them in contact with each other. They are supposed to be talking over the phone, coming up with the plan. Now, that's between the fire department and the manufacturer.
Here is what's happening with the fire department. I've been... I've had conversations with state fire marshal, and I've had conversations with state fire training folks, and they both concluded that the best training will come from the people that owns this equipment, that will come in and train all firemen at the same time. Very, very good training. Their fire marshal is going to get involved because they know it's excellent, excellent training. So fire has been addressed. We want these firemen to have the right equipment, whatever is necessary, but the fire marshal is on board with moving forward with the solar panel companies doing their training because they're experts. Anyway, what else? Yes?
Just want to make sure you're following proper procedure. You probably want to amend your agenda to actually answer these questions, because you're in a public comments right now, and you're answering questions that were given to you by the public. I mean, you can either go to the end of the meeting or just a minute to go through and answer those five questions.
We can go to work session. Can't we, under solar panels?
You could amend it after that if you'd like.
Well, it's just...
Or you can just amend it now and do this now, but you want it... Because you're not... You're in a public comments section right now.
So I'm making a motion to amend the agenda to answer a few questions, just a few. This, I'm not changing the work session.
Okay.
Time, because we got people here for other reasons.
I'll second it.
Got your motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now answer the questions.
So anyway, that's it, I guess. I mean, the article states that the state of California said there was zero toxic fumes coming from the fire, and they are not under any kind of lockdown still, according to what I read. It did not last for three days. The fire might have, but it did. That's just telling you what I read.
He mentioned the freedom of speech, number three.
Uh, August nineteenth.
No, anyway, he said no.
No, I'll answer that one.
Okay.
I haven't been up here in a while, so I guess I...
So the freedom of speech issue, actually, Mr. Hoyt is here. He can actually discuss this because we've had this discussion for years. Once you open up the forum, there is a freedom of speech element to a commission meeting. However, it still has to be directed towards commission business. The commission, any commission in the state of Kansas doesn't have to have a public forum section. It's not... There's not a First Amendment right in the commission meeting itself. So comments made during the actual commission meeting can be made to be stopped, I mean, things of that nature, because you're supposed to be conducting business while you're in the room. So there is no First Amendment speech right actually in a commission meeting until you open the forum. And even then, it's limited to actual county business. So that's the actual answer from the councilman court.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item. David Sager, Casey Johnson, Greg Post, Greg Schick, towing policy. Good evening. You must be Casey Johnson?
I'm Case Johnson.
I know everybody else. I didn't know you, so...
No worries.
Good evening. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I'll take a lot of your time, but I don't know if you're aware of this new contract coming out, this new towing contract, but I've been... I'm a sole proprietor. I own O-N-R, towing. And I'm being forced to have a workman's comp insurance. And from what I understand from the state is I do not... I am not required to have it as a sole proprietor. And the... This new contract is going to require me to have it, just to let you guys know what's up. I don't know if you're aware of what's going on or anything with this new towing contract.
You're stating that the sheriff is getting ready to issue a new contract.
Correct.
And he's asking for a certain type of insurance requirements?
Workman's comp insurance, yes. And as a sole proprietor, I have no employees.
You have no employees.
In the state of Kansas, says I'm exempt. And the state of Kansas says I'm exempt.
Justin.
This, I'm sorry, I mean, this is probably going to be a really complex issue. Obviously, the sheriff, this is a service, so there's actually some areas there where the sheriff has the ability to contract with the service. It's not binding the county, you know, anything long-term. It's usually year-by-year service. The commissioners obviously would get, you know, entwined with possible litigation. I think that we probably want, at some point, if it gets to the point where litigation comes up, you'd probably want to stop the commission meeting, have them write it, you know, put it in writing and submit it to the sheriff and then to the commissioners that way. So we would know, you know, prior to what's kind of going on, if there's possible litigation. Obviously, they're here to speak, but if they start mentioning breach of contract, fiduciary responsibilities, loss of income, things of that nature, it could be a little awkward for the commissioners and people in this room because everyone would end up, could be, end up being witnesses, including the, the people in the, watching the meeting. So I'd just be careful and be, you know, kind of guarded when it comes to that, because if they're gonna, saying that they're being harmed, just like with anyone else, their civil recourse is court.
One question?
Yes.
Does the county commissioners have the right to do the contract, considering the sheriff?
You know, honestly, it's a gray area. I mean, if he was gonna, if an elected official was gonna buy something, you know, like a crusher or, you know, the sheriff's always pretty good about coming in and talking about buying new cars, things of that nature. I think the case law would be on the commissioner's side. This is a really gray area. It hasn't been litigated. I mean, this is just 10 years of doing this job. It, there's not a bright line, because it's a service. It's something that the sheriff can set guidelines on to make sure that, you know, the citizens of Bourbon County are safe and well-protected. So it'd be a matter, it'd be a matter of the civil person, you know, the individual having some type of legal recourse against the person that's letting the contract. I know in Lynn County, they've been dealing with this, the commissioners specifically, if they deal with this issue, because they've taken over that, that responsibility. And it is gray. I can make the argument for both, both sides pretty well.
So, but, but I think people might need to, and maybe, maybe we take this for granted, but if I am in a car wreck and I am capable, I can pick who I want to tow my vehicles, is that correct?
I believe that, that is absolutely correct.
Is that correct, though?
So.
And there's actually.
So basically, this comes to the point to what, what kind of accidents are, are we dealing with? An accident where we don't know, or that Pearson gets pulled over and taken to jail? Those are the types of things we're dealing with?
That would be, that would be what's on the call rotation.
Is that this call rotation?
And just another thing from experiences is that there are certain companies, I mean, I'm just, I'm making one up, like just FedEx, they have a, they'll have a contract with a specific tower that says, I only want this tow company to touch my trucks or my vehicles or my wreck. And so there are those contracts where if there's like a wreck on the side of the road and X tower is working that wreck, it may find out that Y is the one that's supposed to be there on that wreck, that call will occur. Now, obviously, that's in between, that's between, once again, it's a civil, civil action that would occur if, if something stepped on someone's toes or there was a breach of that contract, because that's, that's a fiduciary duty between the tower and the.
And that actually happened here, Jerry, with FedEx. I remember that happening.
Right. So this, this is, could become contentious, but it's, it's an issue of, you know, the what and where of that elected official wanting to have that service have certain expectations. Now, obviously, any of these people can go to court with a lot of, you know, like a lot of things, they can go to court and have it, have their day in court to hear it out, but it's going to be a difficult topic for the commission, because it's, it's always, since I've been here, it's pretty much been since Bill's actually been a sheriff, it's gone through the sheriff's office.
And in response to his workman's comp issue, being a sole proprietor, shouldn't he get a exemption, something from the state, say he don't need workman's comp on himself?
We've called the state.
Yeah, that's.
For the commission, we've called, and they've said that we are exempt.
But can you get him writing?
Well, go, I want to, I want to boil this down, one more, one more comp. So really, I mean, for the sheriff, he can make, I think he can make those decisions if he wants worker's comp or not. For the commission, the exposure comes once the, if, if and when, if and when, I mean, it might not happen, but if it happens, then the commissioners will be basically named as a party, because obviously, the insurance goes through the sheriff, through the commission. So K Camp would get involved and you guys would be named. So that's where the convolution comes from with the possible litigation issue. So with that said, I'm not saying be careful, don't stop it, they obviously have the right to speak, but just keep that in mind.
Okay.
And I'll step out now, because that's enough.
I just feel I'm being forced to buy a service that I'm not required to have.
Well, according to that counselor just there, that Bill can demand that, so.
Well, right, but I didn't know he could demand commerce, so.
I'm sorry?
I was unaware he could demand commerce of the service that, that the state of Kansas told me I was exempt from.
Well, it possibly, something we as commissioners is now, the sheriff, have a good visit and see if we can do anything to help.
Why don't you give guys a heads up?
Keep, keep completely out of it, or, because Bill, you know, I like to think he does a great job.
Right.
I hope, but.
I have nothing to say good or bad, I mean, I, I don't, I have no opinion about it.
And I know he's, he's done it since.
Right. Long time.
Long, long time.
So that's his business.
Yeah, okay.
But it's all I've got.
Okay. Now, there's a few more on the list. Anybody else got anything? Mr. Post, Greg, you want to? Mr. Schick?
Greg Post. I'm GPX Special Record and Repair, and the thing I want to talk about with just what he was talking about, the insurance, it's just like, I operate this myself, and if I have workman's comp, I pay the $3,000 for the workman's comp. Because I'm an owner, workman's comp won't pay me if I get hurt. Okay, that's the Kansas law. And you can look it up, they won't pay me. And it's like, okay, I'm getting this for what reason? And that's the, that's the only gripe I've got. And hopefully, you guys can help me. I talked to Bill about two hours ago. I didn't realize he wasn't going to be here tonight, because I wanted to visit with him.
Good.
But he's out on training or something.
Okay.
But anyway, that's all I've got, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Schick?
One of the reasons I asked to speak tonight was about, I had spoke with Bill probably back in January of '23 about the tow policy and the contract that the tow operators have. And we had this discussion, all of the tow operators were at the jail in their meeting room and discussed this previous to this tow policy going into effect. And, you know, there was a lot of discussion at that time about it would be nice to have some input. And so one of the reasons I requested to be on the agenda for tonight was because I hadn't heard nothing back and I'd followed up on it. I'd followed back up on it like four months later and then followed up again recently and hadn't heard nothing back. And I will tell you this, you know, I asked to be on the meeting tonight and I got an email today saying we're going to have a meeting on October the 1st, but, so, I wanted Bill to be here because I wanted to talk about this. I think it's important that we be a little more proactive. I mean, as commissioners, your jobs look out after us, right? We elected commissioners? I mean, I think that you guys shouldn't just look out after the sheriff's department, you should also look out for the people that vote.
We hold every other elected official as an even playing field. That's our goal.
Well, I understand that, but it seems like we come to the defense of the sheriff's department a little bit too quick, because I think, and I'm not afraid to say this to Bill in person, shouldn't it took nine months to get here? Our insurance costs have gone up 20%. All of our expenses have gone up. If your expenses as a county haven't gone up, then why are you raising my taxes? And I can go into this revenue neutral rate discussion with you, but I will promise you, I own a lot of property, and I don't think any one of them didn't go up 10 to 15% this year. Revenue neutral is a bogus idea. You're increasing your budget every year to cover your cost. Why does it take nine months for us to get together to have a meeting to address this issue? And so this is the reason, one of the reasons I wanted to be on here, and I spoke to Justin about this. I know he's going to be the county counselor up in Lynn County. Lynn, oh, well, you're going to be, if you get voted in, you will be.
I'm going to be county counselor.
And a county attorney.
County attorney, oh, okay, so you're more important. Okay, sorry. So Lynn County has a different policy than Bourbon County. I don't know what the law is, but I would like for you to check into it. I mean, I, I'm not saying that Bill shouldn't be in charge of or anything like that, but things need to be a little more proactive when it comes to this tow policy and when we tow things in, and what we're going to be paying, what we're going to be charging. And that's fair to every company that tows here. So I can't imagine any of these guys that are towing would disagree with what I'm saying. So it's like, I've asked for it to be increased and I explained that, that the reasons for it is I just explained to you tonight. Insurance costs and other costs have increased greatly. And, you know, the county has had the same issues to deal with. I know you guys are going through your budgets right now, right? So stuff costs more. How do you pay for it? We have the same problem, I just can't go out and raise the mill levy.
We didn't raise ours either.
We didn't raise the mill levy.
Well, yeah, but you raised my values of my property 15%.
State did, 9%.
Yeah, I know, but it still went up because your costs went up.
I guess, well, I'm confused, I don't, I don't understand the tow contracts to begin with. Do you want to explain that to me?
Well, basically, it's an agreement to provide, it's basically an agreement to provide services, and I don't have a problem with the tow contract at all. That's not the issue. There's some provisions in there about covering the dollar amounts that you charge for vehicles under $5,000. I mean, there's some specifications in there that cover what you can charge for basically a car, light truck, your mileage charges, and there might be, I may be forgetting something, but that's basically what it boils down to, is so it's basically minimal charges. And, you know, that, that's the easy part of this, to have a meeting and discuss what that dollar amount should be, because I'm sure every person, I can't imagine anybody in this room where their car insurance didn't go up this year. So it's like, how do we pay for this? If we're doing, you know, this is a, a business that there's no guarantee tomorrow you're going to have a job. So when you do have one, you know, you need to, if, if you base it off of previous year's history or three or four years' previous history, you have an idea, but there's no guarantee. So it's about maintaining your business is what it is, and you have to be able to increase that revenue stream somehow. So the basics of the contract are covering reliability, you know, are you going to be there when we call you?
So does, does all the tow services in the county have a contract with the?
Well, I don't know that all of them do, but the ones that signed up, there are, I don't know, I don't know all the tow services in Bourbon County.
So they take turns calling each one of you, or they just?
Well, it's on a rotation program right now, is what it is, so.
Okay.
I don't think all of the tow companies are towing for the, for the county or the city or whoever.
There's seven tow companies, five of them are on rotation for the county, and four of them are, no, five of them are on rotation for the city and four of them on rotation for the county.
Yeah, okay.
So, but I think in the last meeting we had, and I'm just going to keep this real brief, last meeting we had with the sheriff was like, we'd like to discuss this before we have the next meeting, which is why I was up here tonight. So I'm going to put a request in for, apparently, there's a contract in, that's been written up. I don't have a copy of it. We're going to a meeting, I'd like to have a copy of it before I go to a meeting. I'd like to be able to discuss that. I'd like the commissioners to consider, you know, taking over this. I mean, just consider it. It's, it's the way they do it in Lynn County. Justin already explained all that to you. I don't know about the reasons why it's one-way in Lynn County and it's different in Bourbon County, but for whatever reason, apparently, it's okay that the commissioners do this in Lynn County. It would be easy for us to come up here and say, hey, we want to renegotiate because we have this, for whatever reason, our insurance goes up 20%. There may be some terrorist attack, and all of a sudden, the insurance company sends us a bill and says, hey, we're charging you more for your terrorism coverage or something. You know what I'm saying? They can do that.
Sure.
Anyway, thank you.
Greg, thank you, we'll look into it.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
You can go, he can, if he wants to.
You want to talk? Robert?
He's not on it.
Oh, he's not on that list, I'm sorry. He owns, he owns towing, but he's with the, Mr.
Well, hello. I actually just recently heard about this. I need to be over at City Commission dealing with a building, so I'll keep you guys long. So one of the, some things I think got left out, I don't know, like, a couple of things, but I didn't hear them, different topics. One of them was work comp. So since the beginning, I voiced, hey, I don't want to have work comp. And I had the dispatch center say, hey, you'll have it or you're going to get kicked off rotation. That was when Tracy Reed was running in. When Lou took it over, she said the same thing, the rules say you got to have it, either you have it or we'll kick you off rotation, which is.
We can't use names.
Okay. Here nor there, I chose to maintain it. One of the things that got said in the meeting, there was a big meeting, pretty smart, really, I think, the county, county's representatives there, city representatives there, dispatch there. Dispatch, who starts the chain of commerce, okay? What Clifton Beth kind of touched on was non-preference tows. Nobody said, hey, you so-and-so, maybe they're not even on scene anymore, they could be with EMS. Call the next available record. So if I get called out, my company doesn't have work comp, and I turn around and I need a massive amount of help, there's a semi here and trucks here and a car there, I have the freerail right to contract another company. Now, they don't have work comp either, and a chain breaks, something happens, and you have civilians, first responders who aren't even paid there, who knows, gets hurt, deputies get hurt. The liability falls all the way back to dispatch because they started the chain of commerce, they made the phone call. And so dispatch didn't want to be sued. There's a separate provision in that contract that we all signed that was completely separate from work comp, that literally says, hey, these tow companies are going to hold the county, the city and dispatch harmless of any litigation. So the question would be, even if you didn't have work comp, what are you doing to ensure that? A million dollars in liability in itself may not be enough, it may fall under some work comp issues. So it's not about whether I have an employee. I too am, I don't count against my own work comp. My towing company has work comp. I'm not covered. But everybody else is, and when I start contracting other people to be there on scene, those companies are covered underneath my work comp, which is very important to the county. If we all end up not having to have it because Bill supposedly can't enforce these rules, great, I'm going to save myself some money, get it back in my pockets. I'm kind of a fan about a lot of things in the contract, and I just wish they were enforced a little bit more, to be honest with you. There's a lot of good stuff in that contract, and it hadn't been enforced, and some of the other tow companies that even were just up here speaking probably should be grateful that they weren't enforced. So then I know of, we're getting a new contract in October, just to look over, we're all going to get handed this thing. Whether we get to have a say-so, I don't know, you know, Mr. Martin's reputation doesn't precede him. He, I don't, he may say that's how it is. Have a look at it, sign it or don't, you know, but I, I wish y'all would take a close, if you haven't gotten a copy of the contract, get a copy of one, look that thing over. It's got some good stuff in it.
We will look it over and investigate this a little bit.
The work comp thing, though, is not just one person. It's not even a 1099 employee. Some of my family works for me and you don't have to cover them either. But at the end of the day, my company, who is this family operated, still has to have work comp according to Kansas law, because I could contract somebody.
Okay.
So.
Thank you, Robert.
I appreciate your time.
Have a good day. Okay, moving right along. We're going to have a work session regarding solar panel setbacks. Now, if we have a multiple.
I'm going to use the restroom before we.
We're going to take a five-minute break.
Just a few minutes.
Okay, moving right along. The work session, now, I am going to try to stick to the five minutes, because I think we have a lot of people here that wants my comments. So I am going to time you, but these commissioners want you to continue, they can okay that. But again, as I opened the meeting, please, just remain professional. I'm talking about me and Clifton, and Brandon as well, and I'm referring to the audience, please remain professional, because this is a very, very serious topic, and we want to discuss it, and we'll make some decisions. Mike's already recommended we, we table it, that's a possibility. But we'll start the work session with the commissioners talking about what the committee provided to us, and we'll go forward and get some input. So we all know what the committee provided to us. 50-foot setback with trees offset entire perimeter, which is a lot of trees, a lot of trees. So who wants to start? Brandon, you want to start, or Clifton?
So I got an article here that was sent to me. I'm not going to read the whole thing because it's long, I mean, it's super long, but it's about the dangers and the setbacks of solar fields. The first paragraph I'm going to read, it says, according to the World Health Organization, now, take that however you want, right? Despite extensive research, there's no evidence that low-level electromagnetic field exposure from facilities like solar farms harms, harms human health. Nevertheless, for those who may still have concerns, authorities recommend maintaining a distance of at least two kilometers. Now, that's roughly 1.2 miles from a solar field. Now, you would never be able to put them anywhere if that was the case, correct? It goes on to say that solar, unless they're damaged somehow, seriously damaged somehow, don't leak any toxic chemicals. Um, they're, and I'm not saying they don't, but that's if they're, you know, they get damaged, anything, anything pollutes stuff. But then if you scroll down here, and this is, you know, and that's from the World Health Organization, so take it as you will. We all know how well we can, so, but, solar panels are, are getting increasingly prominent, right? As the world moves towards sustainable energy future. Drawing from global research, including insights from reputable entities such as the World Health Organization, the risks associated with living near these installations appear minimal. Yet individual preferences and perceived comfort are equally vital. While there isn't a prescribed safe distance universally applied in Ireland, it's paramount for residents to be informed and consider their comfort thresholds. Ultimately, this continues to harness the sun. The intersection of safety, technology, and personal choice will define the ideal proximity for each individual. Now, 1.2 miles is a long ways. You couldn't put a, you couldn't put a solar panel anywhere in any county if you had to go 1.2 miles. That is a long, long ways. And that was sent to me by, by somebody that's, that's non-solar. He sent me this article. So take it as you will. Um, I, I, I will not be a 1.2-mile setback guy. That's just, I mean, that's, that's ridiculous, 1.2 miles, you can't, most people can't see 1.2 miles anymore. I can't anyways, anymore. But I am for setbacks and, and trying to get the neighbors to feel safe on these things. So that's, that's where I'm at.
Clifton?
So.
I mean, I, uh, I think 50 feet's not enough.
Around the entire property or just the residence?
Around the residence.
I agree with that.
I have a question, can I ask?
Can, can, we could discuss it first, then we'll, and then I'll open up to your hands, okay? Is that okay? Okay, go ahead.
No, I was just saying, I don't, you know, I don't think 50 foot's enough. I think the tree thing's a little excessive, um, you know.
I, I.
Um, around the entire property, I mean, I can think, I wouldn't, you know, if there's solars on, solar panels on the other side of me, I wouldn't want, I mean, the trees planted, but anyway, this is, so I think the tree thing's excessive, but I think the setback from a residence is probably not enough.
I, I agree. I think with a residence, and early on, it was talked about 300 feet from a residence, and I like some trees in that area, but I don't agree with the trees, entire perimeter of the mile. You're talking about roughly 1,056 trees if you go around the whole mile. That's roughly $340,000 to have them planted, probably, so that would be a little excessive. But I do like the greater setback around a residence and some trees helping view that particular section. But we've got to keep in mind, too, that, and I'm going to ask Justin to come here and speak a little bit about what we're talking about, what we decide, and what that really means in reality.
Well, I was going to say, that was, I was going to talk about that.
Yeah.
The fact matter is, all we're going to do is be able to ask.
Yes.
Ain't anything we can enforce.
Yeah. And, and Mike, the problem with us tabling this, we're in a position now that we possibly could go to the solar panel companies and ask for setbacks, so they know the committee was formed, and they was in favor of that, and they're in favor of some setbacks. They, they told us this. So I put, by putting this to next January, February, you might not get the same results. Now, that's something we can consider, and the new commission might do better, or you might do a lot worse for setbacks, because these folks don't have to do anything by their contracts, and we're not zoned. So anything, as my Clifton said, and Justin will repeat, they will do it because we ask them to. They're reasonable to work with, and they understand our concerns. So, uh, Justin, you want to add anything to that, as far as legality, part of it?
Time for, you can time it out if you want, you know, more than, more than comfortable to do it. We kind of do it with wind farm discussion and have that, and we haven't really had it yet, but we can.
I think it's time we have it, then, possibly.
I want to start off, but I can't, um, advocate or tell you guys what to do at all. And that's something that we need to make really clear. I, I talk about mitigated risk as my job function, and we're living it in real time. I mean, it's an issue of, what's my box and how's it painted, basically? And so for me, the, the risk is, um, being a non-zone county is your starting point, and regardless of what you think about coming in after the fact, you have a contract that's been signed by a, a farmer. We had a gentleman that talked about that contract, and he's relying on that, that contract between a private citizen and, and a company. Obviously, there are things that people have brought up that could be a possibility, but that's the starting point. And so your liability is that. Now, I've talked to other people, your liability is also your vista changing and your view changing, and there is civil recourse for that, and there is value in that, but I've never seen a case that shows what that value is. So for me, it's, do, what's your risk? Where do you mitigate it at? And that's not my question to answer, that's kind of for you guys and what, what your job function is as commissioners. So we already have a corporate, uh, industrial solar farm, we're going to call it in Bourbon County. There is no development agreement, there's no decommissioning agreement, there's no road use agreement, and there's no pilot agreement with that, with that project. 10 acres, five acres, whatever it is, it's still an industrial solar power farm in a non-zone county. We were made aware that there could potentially be solar panel farms all the way back before COVID. There should have been, in my opinion, this is my opinion, only we should have been talking about zoning way back then. It's after the fact. You know, the gentleman that was here, he's got the same right as someone that's against it to file a lawsuit, and you have to look at what your risk is, and we've verified on numerous occasions that our insurance provider does not cover inverse condemnation, which, which this is. So with that said, I mean, you can recommend whatever setbacks you want. I know, um, with prior experience with the, the wind farms, is that they want to be reasonable. I mean, I think 1.2 miles is not reasonable, there's a chance of being litigated on that, but I think 300 feet, I mean, I've seen that before, I've, I know it's existing in other jurisdictions from a residence, with the bounty, with the, basically the barrier with trees, is very, I think that is reasonable. And so if we needed to go down that rabbit hole and have that litigation, we possibly could do that, but once again, we have no chip, we have no chair, we have nothing to negotiate because we're a non-zone county. And we have landowners that have signed these contracts that are relying on that contract, just like a contractor would, a car salesman, anybody that signs contracts, there is a offer and acceptance, and then there's a meeting in the minds, excuse me, and then they rely on that income, or rely on that contract to build something, or a pond, or whatever. So I'm, I'm, I have no issues if you guys want to litigate it. It's completely up to you. You have a $25,000 max coverage, the K Camp will pay for an attorney, and that'll be this commission's right, or the next commission's right, you know, on down the road. So we have, we have nothing that can force them to make any setbacks. I think they would be reasonable. I think Commissioner Beth is correct that they would negotiate. I think that, you know, excessive or arbitrary and capricious is the word that gets used a lot with regards to alternative energy programs, that arbitration, you know, that being at is, trees probably around the entire project, especially on, I call them, non, you know, viewing sections. I don't know if that is just or not, but that'd be something else that a judge would have to make a decision on, not, not the commission.
Okay.
If, you know, they can agree to anything, but they don't have to agree to anything that you guys are proposing, just like both of you said, and kind of on some levels Brandon said.
Request, thank you very much.
Any other questions to me or comments, and I'm sorry, I had a frog.
No, that's all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I, you, Clifton, and Brandon, I'm going to open up to the audience.
Open it up to the audience.
We'll do it by hand, and I'm going to do it by five minutes, and, and if we're in a healthy, good discussion, I'm going to ask these two to let you continue, and there you have the floor.
I guess just, just, um, feeding off of our thoughts that came as Justin was speaking, so I guess, so, uh, another, earlier tonight, it was talking about protecting the citizens, and, and I find it interesting that there are things you, uh, the topics that you decide to make an effort to protect citizens, and then there are topics that it's difficult for you to find a way to protect all. And I, and I, and I don't mean that in that everybody gets one way, and nobody gets anything, you know? So in my mind, um, it, it seems to go back to the contract that was written for the, the one that you guys signed, that one. I can't speak to the ones that leased ground, because I've not seen one of those, but in my mind, when a contract says 25 feet, and now here we are today, that again, just, um, something else that was, it was a poorly written contract to begin with. And I think that's what we, we want to, if, if possible, going forward, that, um, depending on the results of tonight, um, get something else a, a little more, um, set in place, so we're not here again, so.
Thank you. And in my opinion, that's why we're having the discussion, to try to improve the setbacks of what was originally done. And speaking for myself only, I do try to represent everyone. Uh, the difference in those folks, I mean, there wasn't you folks trying to take their records away. So this is a little different, property owner, property owner. So we have to represent both, which it means looks like we're not representing one or the other. So, you know, uh, someone mentioned the Constitution earlier. It says property rights in there, so, thank you. Who's next?
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you. I, uh, didn't get, uh, I was late getting here, so I didn't get in on the public side of it anyway, so I'm glad that this has presented itself. Uh, just a couple of things. I had some stuff prepared, but, um, a lot of it is just rehashing over what we've been, what we've been talking, but with what the committee had advised on 50 feet, and the zoning, and then the public hearing, um, uh, I'll start at the bottom. Public hearing was my ideal. I brought it to you guys, I planted that seed with that, that committee. And I kind of been thinking about it myself on that, that, um, like Justin said there, we should have probably been covering this a long time ago. That's what due process is, is this, you know, we should have had this discussion, there should have been public hearings long before the first agreement was ever signed, but nobody really even knew that anything was even occurring with solar until those agreements were signed. I mean, I never seen anything in the paper, I never seen a work session, uh, or any of that, so. And then come back, coming back to zoning, um, state statute, uh, does cover, um, conditional use, which would be, um, a resolution that governs setbacks, governs soil samples, um, all the environmental concerns, all that stuff would be in, in, which I, I provided, um, several different times, there, the state of Kansas attempted to do this two years ago in a Senate bill that, that died in committee, and, uh, but that's a 16-page resolution that governs all this stuff. I think I've shared that with you as well. Um, and then, uh, just lastly, I, um, I think that, uh, there is a possibility that, or, well, it kind of goes back to the public hearing, I don't think you guys would do it anyway, but you could put it on the ballot to see whether this county even wanted zoning to begin with or not, but that's kind of like he said, putting that cat back in the bag, and that will scratch the crap out of you. Um, which should have probably never been let out of the bag. I, I love metaphors, so, um, when you look at the origin of that statement, letting the cat out of the bag, it goes back to medieval times when they used to put cats in the bags to deceive people on livestock, or on pigs, and stuff like that, so.
And David responds, it did come up three years ago, zoning.
For, for solar?
More than once, actually.
Actually, twice that I know of, any type of zoning, and it went nowhere.
Well, I mean, I'm talking about, I'm talking about this, this particular deal on, with Hinton Creek. Nobody knew about that deal until you guys signed agreements.
Because it was a private contract. Why would, it was a private, why would they call you or me, hey, we're signing a private contract?
You know, I would have thought, I'm just, it's just my opinion, that, uh, when, with all the trouble that happened over the wind.
Right.
That maybe we would have had more of a public hearings and, and stuff, which is, which is, to me.
They're already here.
They're already here, they've signed a contract. What tool would we use?
Before they, before we knew about it, so how would we stop it then? How would we put that cat back?
But right after, right after the wind, you guys had opportunity.
And we brought it up more than once.
Uh, well, again, I never seen a deal in the paper, I never seen a public hearing announced that says we're going to discuss this.
Were you watching the commission meeting then, because it was brought up more than once?
So, I mean, to me, that's, that's, that's the due process, is allowing those things to happen.
Thank you, David.
Um, actually, I think some of the people who were in the room when this actually occurred, we said right after the wind farm that you better get on zoning ASAP, because solar panel farms are going to probably come. That's a direct quote. And some people who were in the room, actually, I know heard it, because it was done in an open meeting. It was actually recorded, I think, by one of the television stations, so absolutely happened. And then, I know for two other occasions, we also talked to at least these two commissioners about it, and then the prior commissioner, Lynn O'Hare, and the other, they, that came up again. So I know of at least seven times or eight times in my 10 years here that we brought it up, and I've asked it, we looked for, we looked at going forward on it, and it was all eight times it never went forward.
Okay.
So, and, and it is a private contract, they never had to, they don't, I guess the really important part here is that, um, I was following a, um, combine on Sunday night on a county road, and that combine is going to weigh way more than any equipment that the solar panels are going to bring in. The wind farm's totally different scenario, but it's 80,000 pounds, so the cranes that they use are way less than a tractor. And I've verified all that, too. I mean, that's just math, it's just math, it's what the weights are, so.
And you mentioned that, I mean, Hartland built one, and they didn't contact us.
We hadn't, we hadn't, no, I, we actually, in my, I'm not making this story up, I actually heard about it from our road and bridge director, and it was already built.
That's where I heard it, too, from.
Yeah. I have no, I had no idea what's even going on. We never were contacted by their attorneys, or, and that was built without a road use agreement, a decommissioning agreement, development agreement, or a pilot agreement.
That's a local company.
Right. And all, all these, these companies do not have to do any of those four documents.
Okay, thank you. Who's next?
Yes.
Stacy's been, yeah.
Good evening.
Hi. So, um, my question to you is that this contract was signed already with a private individual. But what, what we are not realizing, or maybe you are and don't care, is these contracts, it's not a contract to build a house, it's not a contract to build a new barn. It's putting in an industrial solar farm in front of our homes and our livelihoods. And Mike is my father-in-law, and talking about being impartial, there are a lot of things between some commissioners and the Bourbon County ready that are involved with these solar farms, and that is not being impartial at all. If you're ready, if Rob, can't say names.
He's not an employee.
He's not an employee? If Rob Harrington is an employee of the solar farm company, that is impartial. I mean, not, but anyway.
So I have a question. You pointed at me, are you accusing me of a crime?
Um, I'm accusing you and Justin, you have been. You have been, you bought a property, and you...
Does this have to do with solar panels?
It does. It does.
Continue then, please.
And it has been told all through town that you are going to redo these properties for the solar panel workers.
Okay. But it has nothing to do with the solar panels?
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying about being fair.
But we're getting off track here, we're getting off track here.
Because I don't own any property, so you don't know, that's not, that's not true.
Okay.
And so, are you accusing me of a crime? Plain and simple, yes or no?
Not yet.
Okay.
Oh, but you're going to.
Can we?
Not yet.
Can we move on?
So, everybody here, everybody here, no, 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 everybody here, everybody here saw her shake her head, yes, that she is accusing me of a crime.
No.
Is that, is that fair?
She said, she's, she said, she said not yet.
No.
Okay.
So, my question...
Please, this is about solar panel farm setbacks.
My question about the setbacks. And being next to a resident.
Okay.
What if we have land that doesn't have a home on it? That we, it might, 10 years later.
Very good point.
So, I want you to take that into consideration.
Well, we, we have a lot of things we need to consider during this, so yes, thank you. Okay. Who's next? Thank you. Maria?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hi, gentlemen.
How are you?
Okay. I may be talking completely out of turn here, because I'm kind of ignorant, I'm not as up to date on some of this stuff, but I do remember when the wind farms was coming through, and a prior commissioner and I had discussed, because we are, we are an unzoned county. We continue to be an unzoned county. I understand some of the ramifications of being a zoned county, like if I want to do a pond, or I want to build a, a barn, or I want to do some of the things that, you know, you know, back in the day, we had the Amish coming in, had we been a zoned county at that point, we might not be inundated with some of those folks. My question was, and I think Justin stated, that it's been brought up seven or eight times, and I can't remember the timeframe, Jim's been gone five years, so I'm gonna guess about four years, that the, the wind turbines come in, and I had spoken with the prior commissioner, I think, I don't think any of you guys were on there at that point, about doing a zoning height restriction. Because I, I do respect, I do like the fact that as a farmer and a rancher and a landowner in Bourbon County, if I want to go build a pond over here, I don't have to have all y'all's permission to do it, or if I want to build a barn over here, I can do that, or a fence, or whatever. I respect that, I think that's okay. I do think we've dropped the ball a little bit over the last, let's say, four years, of not pursuing some type of zoning in our county, and I do feel that if the prior commission had, I'm trying to figure out how to politely say this, had taken care of business at that point, and followed through, and maybe got in your ear a little bit over, hey, this wind, this wind turbine thing ended up as a postcard on our desk, and it was already a done deal, we didn't know it, we kind of got caught off guard, but hey, let's not get caught with our pants down again, because there's the potential, the solar panels are gonna come in, or ABC, or 1, 2, 3, or who the hell knows what's coming in our future, that some of us may want, and some of us may not want. Why do we not explore the ideas in Bourbon County of doing some type of zoning, one, industrial, solar panels? Had we done that, had we done the height restriction, some of those things, yo, we might not be here right now, we might be sitting at home watching TV, instead of sitting here cussing and discussing what we should have, could have, might have done.
Just for information, three years ago, we did discuss a special use permit for towers.
Uh-huh.
And it didn't take off, because it was one built north of town, pretty close to a house, and I brought it up, commissioned that time, and we didn't get much interest from the public or anything else, and I was also working with a couple ladies on a special use permit going forward, twice in the last four years, and they kind of backed off for some reason, so I did too, I, I couldn't get any feedback from the public to help move zoning forward. I had zero...
Like a height restriction zoning?
Yeah. I tried that, and it went nowhere.
And so, that's partly on me for being an uneducated, an un-whatever citizen, of not staying on top of that. Because with the prior commission, I was kind of in touch with him, and that was things that we had talked about, and as y'all know, my last five years has been kind of a rollercoaster with trying to keep things going, so that's on me for not staying on it. But I guess my question at this point, do we want to continue to be caught with our pants down? I am, Glenn will attest to this, I'm a huge proponent of not being caught with my pants down. I hate that, in a huge, huge way. And that goes back to David using, you know, the cat in the bag type of deal. That's, that's my deal. Is there something that we could do going forward? Yeah, we've got, maybe y'all are gonna pass this tonight, and we may just have to suck it up and go with it. I don't know what you're gonna do.
Yeah.
But my thing is, is why are we not pursuing? And what do I need to do to pursue some type of an industrial farming, I don't even know all the terminologies, because I, I, I'm consumed with other things, and that's on me.
I'm willing to adjust and talk, but we did, some of us tried to get that off the ground, and it went nowhere.
So what do I need to do to help our county become some type of zone?
I believe your next commission is gonna support zoning. I believe that, I don't, I'm not speaking for them, just some of the things they said during their campaign. I believe you'll see zoning on the ballot with your new, new commissioners.
But I am, I am not for complete zoning, like some of our, our surrounding counties. But I am for, and I do feel from what research I've, Clifton, you can shake your head, I've done a little bit of research as well, and you're smart, just like everybody, but I'm just saying, I think there are some things that I've been told that can be done as a county to protect farms from height restriction and industrial things coming into the agriculture areas.
Go ahead, Justin. Thank you. You don't have to be done, this, he wants comments.
Oh, sure.
No, I don't, no, I don't.
She actually articulated very well, there, so there's some diff, there's a differential of things that I think she were talking about, so we want to make sure we all get on the same terminology. So agricultural restrictions do exist under the FDA, EPA, things of that nature. So you can't build a feedlot unless you go through the federal government. There's height restrictions on towers, close to airports, close to ponds, things of that nature, that the federal government actually restricts. Hog farms, slaughterhouses, things like that are also controlled by the federal government. So, there are those stopgaps that are there for regs on height, water, and then contamination, possible contamination on land. So that's really important. I think that was absolutely talked about in March of 2020, I actually remember the day, March 15th of 2020, a committee should have been formed, it wasn't. The committee, a public committee could have been formed, I don't know why it wasn't, but the very first time it was brought up was actually in 2014, in November, in a public meeting with Commissioner Albright, Commissioner Coleman, and Commissioner Warren, and then when Lynn came on, it was brought up again, probably in 2015. Now, they weren't published, they weren't, you know, video streamed like they were, are now, but I do recollect that there was two, two times it was brought up within a year period. And a committee, a public committee, or I'm sorry, a private, public committee could absolutely start this process to get a zoning thing done. And what I talked about, putting on a petition, is actually having a vote. You could actually put it on a petition to vote, to see if you want zoning, but this process is gonna start with the next commission, which is, I think is a good thing.
So it's your opinion, a petition can be filed with a certain percentage of names to force the commission to put zoning on the ballot?
Well, you can, you can, no, it's, it's a guide, it could be something that says we want zoning, but that's, that's kind of a midpoint at this point, because you're already, you're already starting the process.
Yeah.
Which you can follow to get that done in a county. And there, and I want to say it again, a landowner has the ability to sue another landowner over damages. So if, I don't, I'm not gonna get into that part and give legal advice, but property owner A can sue property owner B to stop a project under civil law, if they believe, and they can prove that it's gonna cause damages.
Or vice versa.
Or vice versa.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
And I, I shook my head, not in disrespect or anything, I shook my head, because you started out with zoning here, and it turns into this, turns into a book.
It, it, zoning...
That's my, I, I am a completely...
My basic question is just why?
I am 100% against zoning in any way, shape, or form. I've been that way from day one, and I'm not gonna change.
Well, I don't know, I wish I knew the answer to that.
But if you start, all of a sudden, you're zoning dog, a person building a doghouse. That's...
When I brought up zoning several times, Commissioner Beth, you just mentioned, he's, he's against zoning, which is, God given right, and Commissioner, other commissioner was, it was two against, one favor, and we brought it up twice.
This is why we need...
Pardon?
This is why we need...
We all signed the thing for five.
Yeah, yeah, I, I signed the petition for five, so.
I mean, so...
But here, again, there's, I mean, there's...
But at that time, at that time, my point is, one voice, I was one voice at that time, twice, and it went nowhere.
And that's too bad.
Well, I know, but that's what happens. So, anyway, who's next? Pete, you raised your hand. Thank you, Justin.
Your four zone, correct?
I don't have a...
Limited zoning.
No, not limited. No, I don't believe in limited zoning. Take the word zoning out and call it land use, it means the same thing.
Okay.
Zoning means land use, it's the same meaning. I do not support limited, I don't support spot zoning. If the people of Bourbon County want zoning, they should have an opportunity to get it. And there'd be so many things grandfathered in, like agricultural, this and that, the list goes on, what's grandfathered in.
Where did Justin go? Justin, step out here, please. You guys can, can do a resolution, the, the county?
I have to be recorded.
Okay.
I don't want to sit down on the chair.
I thought you said you had to be in my face.
No, space.
You're tall enough. As I understand it, the commission can put zoning on the ballot with, or they can pass a resolution.
I do have to stand up, I gotta crank my leg, so go ahead, I'm listening.
Okay. As I understand it, the commission can put by two to one vote. Is that correct or not? You know, I've done some research on this, it's, it's an interesting, I mean, I think you have to go through the, the public hearings, things of that nature. What I was talking about was having enough people to vote to say, yes, we want zoning. But why do that? Because the process has already started. So, at this point, I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna happen, I think, in four months anyway. And actually, the process really has already started.
So the new commission can vote in January to have it on the April ballot, when the new commissioners are voted in. If, if it passes, if it passes.
Not necess, I mean, not necessary, I mean, you need to go through, there's a statute that says if you want zoning, I was talking about a popular vote, because that's something we've always, I've always wanted to see. I mean, I totally agree that, I think that it'd be interesting to see what the people of Bourbon County would want, if they want zoning or not. And that's where the silence has been since I've been here, that no one's come and said, we want zoning. I mean, I've never, I'm not, in the meetings I've been to, which is for the 10 years, I think I've missed like maybe four or five meetings, I've never heard anybody say, even during the wind farms stuff, there wasn't a lot of people jumping up and down saying we wanted zoning, which I was surprised by, after the fact, I thought it would be, it would happen, so.
Okay.
So it's, it's, you're going through the correct process by statute, by having the committee, by having the public hearings, you gotta have public hearings, you gotta go through that. We, we still don't know what people really want, zoning by a majority, but we'll find out.
So the next step would be public hearings, to get input.
I'd get your committee started, I mean, this, I mean, I get the, the, I don't like to call it spot zoning either, I mean, I think it, spot zoning's gonna get litigated pretty soon. That's gonna happen.
Spot zoning.
Sure, it's actually, we can use a real world example in Lynn County. So what Lynn County has done is they've gone, the committee went into a meeting and said we want to, after the fact, they didn't have a restriction on industrial solar in Lynn County prior to the contracts being signed, so after the contracts were signed, the committee came in and then made the recommendation to the commissioners to spot zone or change the zoning after the fact. So they spot zoned that area. They, they have every right to do that as commissioners?
What we're asking is for agriculture, be it zone agriculture, residential, residential, and, and, and all that would take was be a resolution, wouldn't take over anything else but a resolution.
I, I would, I would worry about your, your, your risk. Because what's the definite, like, here's a really good example, I know of a free range chicken farm in Bourbon County.
You're going on, you're just...
No, not, not Tim.
All I'm saying is, is if agriculture's agriculture.
Right. What is agriculture?
Something, what we're doing out there...
Right. It's sun, and I'm, I'm just...
Not an industrial...
I know, I'm just making, I'm making, I'm not making an argument, I'm just making a, a point. It's harvesting sun?
That doesn't mean it can't be there.
Right.
It, it can, there can be an exception made, but if we have zoning for agriculture...
If I'm a, if I'm a land user, natural gas, oil, is that agriculture?
Nope.
No, right? Everyone's, I've got lots of people saying, no, it's not. So if that, well, yeah, I've got, some other people are saying that it's not.
But you have a special use permit for that, that's why I'm saying...
So, so if that's the case, are you, are you grandfathering that in?
Well, you'd have to.
You'd have to at this point, no.
And that's my point.
That was my question, you said spot zoning.
Right.
Is that the same as conditional use or special, special?
Well, you know, I'm, I am not gonna have to litigate this, so it's not on me, but, you know, it's a matter of opinion, there's, and my, now my second time around doing this, there's no real case on point. I believe that in the very near future, we're gonna have some litigation that's gonna show this, show us that. We got a Rockcory case, I know it's been filed, and I know there's another case coming that's gonna show us and give us direction. There is some case law that probably supports a non-zoned county with the land user having their property rights.
Wobenese versus Zimmerman.
Yeah, there's some, there's some other ones, too, but there's some pretty good law.
What was the result of Lynn County? Lynn County's not gonna have, they decided not to have...
There, there, there is, I would, I don't know if there's gonna be active litigation, but there's definitely some court requests that were made.
And, and they, and what was the response by the commission in Lynn County? They said, bring it on?
Yeah, exactly. They, they have the right to do that, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with that at all, but they're, they don't have coverage under their insurance, so I'd have no, I have no clue, I've, I've always wanted to know, because I, I found out after the fact with the, the wind farms are getting, but I have no idea what a landowner's getting per acre.
So back to Mike's point, why don't we postpone this until they, until the new commission is coming?
Because if, because if the, the contracts are already signed, and this is my opinion again, you guys, they can do whatever they want with it.
They want to do 22,000 acres or something of solar panels.
Right.
There's another 400,000 acres, so, so why...
In Bourbon County?
What?
400,000?
I don't know, how many acres are in Bourbon County?
Right, right. I don't, I've never...
How many acres are in Bourbon County?
I've been told 6,000.
6,000? 6,000 acres.
No, 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 he's talking, wait, 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 there's a clerk, Tim, you're talking about...
Acres totally are in Bourbon County.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you meant how many solar panel acres.
Total count, total acres.
Ooh, 440,000?
Let's just say 400, and they're doing 22,000.
400,000.
There's 22,000.
So, that way, that's, but I wanna, I wanna.
There's people that live in the other, you know.
Right.
380,000 acres that, that would like to have agriculture.
Yeah, fact, fact, facts are important. Uh, I'm just giving you information I've been given, and you can take it for what it's worth, and, you know, obviously, you've done that before. And that, I don't mean that in a rude way, I'm just saying, um, no one is, the, the groups I've talked to, not even close to 22,000 acres of solar. That's not even, and that number.
But it could be 22,000 acres.
Well, it could be 10,000 or 50,000.
50,000 acres, if you don't do so.
Right, you're right. But there's a cost benefit analysis.
Mike, did you hear a, a number of 22, 20,000 that's on the map? It's on the map, Kansas map.
It's just like, um, wind farms, though, they're not gonna be able to put them everywhere. There's, there's setbacks with waterways, there's setbacks with houses, or set, I mean, they're, they're not gonna put them all. They, this is the same way, if you looked at the wind farm maps, it looked like it was the whole western part of Bourbon County.
Crawford County, what they did last week?
Um, my understanding is Crawford County is going to, um, do the solar panels with setbacks. That's what I was, but I could be wrong.
They feel like the Jones Law Firm, they're gonna start doing some zoning on Countywide over there.
Right, yeah, and they're, they're, but they've, they've agreed that solar panels are gonna go in their county. That, that's the last I heard, and they were gonna do setbacks.
I heard they was gonna shut it down.
I heard one year more.
Right. But, once again.
I will see a moratorium until the, and what we've decided on till the end of the year or something like that.
Right. So, and you, once again, it's just advice, um, and you can take it for what it's worth, but a moratorium in a non-zone county.
That was a question I had, what was the more, you know, they passed the moratorium.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I believe it was for new projects and not prior contracts that were signed.
Right.
It hasn't been litigated. I'm not aware, aware of any case law, but obviously, in a non-zone county, it.
So, we're, we're, I mean, for me, it's always been moving forward.
Right. Yeah, and I, you know, obviously, um, I think, I mean, I'm not, I mean, I'll say it, I mean, my, I'm gonna resign in October. My last day will be at the end of this year. I, I won't be giving the new commission any legal advice. I, I wish you all the luck. I mean, I hope that we get a case somewhere. I was telling a citizen, I hope we get a case somewhere that gives us the bright line that we've been waiting on for a good 10 years, but.
I'm not against solar panels. I think they ought to do it like they did in California, put them on people's roofs.
Right.
Electricity use right there. We don't have these.
Well, that's, that's not, yeah, that's, that's not my, that's not mine.
Need to get back in order here.
I don't, yeah, yeah, I don't.
That's your job.
Yeah, let's get back in order here. Pete, you have something else?
Am I done? Yes. For now, anyway. I hope for the night.
Maybe, probably not. Pete, you had something else you wanted to finish?
So, so, is what our lawyer told us that you can start or pass the zoning through resolution? Is that true or not?
He might as well, he might as well say.
That's what I asked.
To begin with.
That was the original question.
That's what I asked to begin with. We actually, um, you know, I, I recommended to the commission to get a second opinion on this. I know that we've had some court requests on that second opinion. I did not have, I already, you know, I talked to, um, I think KAC, which was Jay, he's the, um, Kansas Association of Counties Attorney. I know that some two, I know at least two commissioners contacted numerous attorneys. They all said the same thing, that it would be risky. That's the best word I can come up with, that it would, could create, could create, and that letter that was given to this attorney, there's always opinions that I disagree with that.
I recognize you. Please take the podium, please, for the people can hear you, please?
This one?
Okay.
It was done this way in Lynn County, why can't it be done here? Can they hear that?
Yes, because Lynn, Lynn County is already zoned. We're not zoned.
They're already zoned.
They have a zoning committee, a zoning board, they have a zoning process, they.
I don't think that has anything to do with it. If zoning can be passed with resolution, that's what I'm asking.
Okay, let's move along.
No, that, the question is, is.
Well, he said, he said he would advise against it.
I would, I would let the people speak.
Yeah, let's, let's let the people decide.
No, that's not the question. The question was, can it be passed with a resolution? But.
I, I don't, I don't think, I, in my opinion, it would cause, mitigate liability.
No, it has nothing to do with that. Can it be done or can it be?
Tim, you're out of order, sir. I've asked you to come to the podium and talk for everyone can hear you, please, very politely. Everyone wants to hear you.
But I have, the third time I've asked it.
Sure.
Okay, well, then, just answer this. Tonight, we're not going to pass a resolution for zoning.
I understand that. That's why I think we need to put it to the future commissioners.
And we might do that, get her night.
I believe that myself and other attorneys say that we're not, that's probably not proven. So, the answer would be no, if not, it's something.
Pete, were you, are you done? We're not, we're not gonna vote tonight on that resolution.
I'm not, okay, I'm not, I'm not saying you are. I'm asking the question, that's all.
And he's answered it. He's advised us not to do that.
He's advised you not to do that, but it can be done.
He did?
There you go.
Okay, thank you. What else?
Uh, my next question is, you negotiated four contracts with these guys, correct? You negotiated road use, um, or?
Development, road use, decommissioning, and donation, four of them.
And on that, in those contracts, you negotiated setbacks?
On the first one, yes, mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yes.
Who, who negotiated the 25-foot setback, number one?
Does it? It was done. Does it really matter at this point who did it? It's not gonna change the contract.
It's not gonna change it, but, but, uh.
It doesn't matter. We're trying to correct it here. We have an opportunity to correct it if we can.
Yes, 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 yeah.
I can answer that question then.
Yeah. You might as well say.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stay here. Really, in, in that project, and I think where it's located, kinda like with the wind farms, we have a good idea where it is. It's in the southwest corner. We've never seen a map, we're just making some assumptions. The setbacks there were pretty much done between the landowner and the company. I don't think that's a, you know, that's probably the largest project in Bourbon County, I'm making assumptions again, but it's the largest one. It might go, um, based off the donation agreement. You're looking at, you know, at the maximum 600 megawatts, down to 400. So, you can do the math online, but it's not a, you know, 10,000 or 12,000 acres. It's smaller than that. So, that was done because of where the location of it is. I talked to patrons about the second project. There are some houses that are potentially in that field, and I think that they can negotiate those setbacks with the solar panels. I think Brandon said the same thing, but.
I'm, I'm working on it.
Yeah, I mean, that negotiations can happen between landowner A and landowner B and the solar company. And that's happened with the wind farms, too.
All right. I think Katie, you're next.
I'm fine. So, I'm sorry, I've been in the dentist chair watching a commission meeting, so that's like double punishment, right? For three hours. My question, Justin, don't go anywhere.
Okay, I'm just trying to get out of the way.
So, in March of, I'm not sure what year, when the wind turbine discussion was going on. March of 2020. I think Cliff, Clifton, Commissioner Beth, you and Commissioner Harris were just on the commission then.
No, we were not.
Okay, so at this meeting that I watched, you two were on, on the commission and Nelson. And 25-foot setbacks were agreed to in a contract with the wind turbines. And at that time, you said, by agreeing.
Not wind, it'd been, it's solar. Wind turbine setbacks are way farther than that.
There was, there were setbacks that were agreed to, and it was in relation to the wind turbines. And you said at that time, by agreeing to these, you are saying that we have de facto zoning.
On, on, I do, I totally agree.
So, what does that mean?
Sure, I'll explain that.
So, um, apples for apples, so a wind farm is a wind farm, and a solar panel is a solar panel. You know, with a wind, if another wind farm came in, which I don't think is gonna happen, I really want that on the record. I don't think based off the information that I've seen that another wind farm's gonna come to Bourbon County. Just because, I have to say that because it'll light people up. But, um, if it did happen, they would have the same setbacks as the existing, uh, wind farms. And so, they were pretty substantial from, um, barns, structures, roads, things of that nature. So, that would be where that de facto zoning would occur. We wouldn't come, you know, we wouldn't have the setbacks become closer, we would have them at least that, that length or, or more. Solar panels are different, they're different. It's a different function, a different height, different, I mean, it's just totally different.
Okay.
And we have a height restriction, by the way, on our wind farms, turbines, too.
I thought you did. That was before my time, but I thought you did, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Who else? Okay, yes, Mr. Barks?
Two things, and I'm not gonna ask, even ask you to answer a question. Number one, I don't like the fact that they're called solar farms. They're not producing, or wind farms, they're not producing anything agriculture related. They're not producing anything for us, for our county. And the other thing is, I just don't understand why counties around us can stop it, but we can't. That's all I'm gonna say.
Well, I would comment that Lynn County is zoned. That helps, makes a big difference.
So is Crawford.
It, it sure does, it makes a difference. Okay, anyone else?
Is Neosha County zoned?
I don't know. Neosha County isn't.
I think Labette wasn't, I think Neosha has, and Labette isn't.
Labette is now. They did it after the.
Until they get.
Labette is, Labette is now because we've got.
Until that gets litigated.
They did it right after the wind farms came in.
Okay, I'm gonna close this discussion. I don't think, we're never near to make a decision tonight, are you, on the setbacks?
Aren't we not?
I don't have a problem table.
I mean, well, I think 250-foot setbacks, 300 from residents, that's what we ask for, and some trees around it, and that's all we can do, so.
Brandon, what are you gonna do?
Am I done now, for real?
I think, well, no, you're next.
Hey, you're next.
I would prefer 600 with a visual barrier, but they can go talk to the non-participating landowner if they want it closer. I mean, it gives more choice to the, it, it, what it does is it forces them to go talk to the neighbor and say, hey, we're putting these in, we'd like them to be here.
You're talking about 600 from a resident or the fence?
Yeah, 600 from the resident, minimum. I mean, I think that's, that's, I mean, with the visual barrier and, and we throw in a good neighbor clause, where if they wanna go talk to the neighbor and get closer, they can.
Great. But let's be perfectly clear again, if we vote on 600 or 300, all we can do is go to the solar panel company, and you've been talking to them, and say, this is our recommendation, this is what we want you to do. And they can say, no, we're not doing that. And there's nothing we can do about it until, if this moratorium continues and the next commission passes zoning, then they can address a different type of setback at that time under the zoning rules. And you do, you'll have a board of zoning to look at things, you'll have special use permits involved in the zoning. Now, you'll have industrial, and then you'll have so many uses in that, and you can use a, do a special use permit. So, uh, you'll have to have some public, just a minute, please. You had to have some public meetings to move forward with zoning, and so it's, it's gonna take some time. Okay, one more. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Yes, sir.
Podium, please.
Can we do like a hybrid situation where you do, say, 300 feet or 600 feet or, uh, tree line? That way, the, uh, the affected neighbor or resident would have an option?
That's what I was just talking about. Okay. We said, we said our, we said our, our, our setbacks from a residence is X amount. But then we put in there that if the solar panel wants, if the solar company wants to get closer, they can come knock on your door and say, hey. Okay. Can we be 75 feet from your house if we put up some trees?
So, so that private agreement would be superior than the, the mandated setback?
It already is.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just asking.
And no, and I'm not ready to make any decisions tonight, that's not. So, but that's, that's how, that's how I would do it, that's how I would set it up, is this is our, this is our mandate in the county. If you wanna, if you want to exceed that, that's between you and the participating landowner and the non-participating landowner, whose house you're gonna be next to.
Okay.
The only thing we stipulate is, you need to start at this, and you need to put up a visual barrier.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
At least that's how I would do it. I can.
Yes, Mr. Walker, come, come to the podium, please.
I'm coming to the podium. Ain't no big deal, baby. I'm Clint Walker, and I, I have followed Crawford County extensively, reading, you know, about what they're doing over there. Number one, we don't do this in Bourbon County, but they have put a moratorium until December of this year because they wanted to have a strategic plan to take and do zoning for the rest of the county. Not spot zoning, but zone the rest of the county. What that plan is gonna cost them, and they've had two firms come in and give them an estimate, is gonna be $200,000 just for the, for the plan. I'm just saying. And if we're gonna go, I don't care if you're gonna spot zone or anything else, uh, the county's gonna have to have some kind of strategic plan, and, and it's gonna cost us money to do that.
Well, the difference, Mr. Walker, you're calling a strategic plan several times in the past few weeks. I call it a comprehensive plan.
Yeah, well, I think they're calling the same thing.
It's the same thing.
Yeah.
And that's just it, zoning, it, it just doesn't develop overnight. You develop a board, you, you start grandfathering, you, but the word zoning is the same word as land use.
Yeah.
You start putting a plan together, what land use you want in Bourbon County, and what direction do you want to the south?
Oh, yeah.
So, you put a comprehensive plan together, and this board reviews it, or if someone wants to change your zoning, you come to that board and application, and they do the review, and then it comes to, just like any other board.
Oh, yeah.
Comes to commission. But it's a process that can happen if that's what the people want.
Yeah, I, I'd have to come to the commission and go, I, I wanna open, for example, a mechanic shop on my land out there. That's not agriculture. I would have to come to the commission and say, hey, I wanna do this, you know? I mean, if it, if it's industrial or whatever, hey, agriculture's agricultural, that's.
I would think what's there today would be grandfathered.
Yeah.
But if a new company come in, want to put in some oil wells, now that's industrial.
Oh, yeah.
New ones, new ones.
Oh, yeah.
Everything else will be grandfathered.
Oh, yeah.
In my opinion, so.
Yeah.
Anyway, all right, let's, let's move on. Yes, Mike?
First of all, I would like to see some form of zoning. Agriculture, leave it the way it is. If it's agriculture, so what? Commercial, then we need to be, have some kind of protection, um, not trying to totally eliminate it. Quote, McMarina said, don't get with a, caught with your pants down. Let them come in, and if it's oil, great, let them come and ask for a permit. Having said all of that, this group of people right here that are against what's happening, we, with the blade, goes. When this, when turbines passed, everybody is quit. Throw their hands, walk out. We should have stayed the course and not necessarily kept solar panels out, kept them out of my front yard, Bo's front yard, and several other people. One day, one meeting here several weeks ago, a ten, or a guy that has a lease with the solar panels, said 25 feet was plenty of setback because of low population. That's, that's fine, except when you're right across the road from 1,400 acres of it. Stacy talked about farm that they have, doesn't have a house on it, but someday our grandson, my grandson, their son, would like to put a house on that place. We'll do that. There's a farm out there that's for sale. Lot of money. 240 acres right across the road from it. What's gonna happen when somebody from Kansas City or New York City walks in there and buys that? They think that they've got a place that they can enjoy the rest of their life without all of the commercial stuff. And all at once, they're starting to build 240 acres of solar panels right across. You think there're not gonna be some litigation over that? A lot of them.
Justin mentioned it could happen, litigation, if they prove damages, yeah. I agree with you, Mike.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, everyone, for their interest and discussions. Appreciate everyone staying professional, including me, Clifton, Brandon, everyone. So, I wanna make sure everyone knows that we're, we're gonna discuss this further. Lot of good discussion here. There's certainly a lot of difference of opinions of the setbacks, but we also have to remember that it's a request to the existing contracts. We can't demand anything, so, anyway. Did you have something else, Justin? Okay, okay, here. All right, moving right on. Justin Meeks, executive, thank you, everyone, so. Justin Meeks, you're up.
I know I am. I don't love this. I've been for years.
I'm hesitating because this actually probably needs to be a, not a short executive session.
Short. Short.
Short, it's that easy to fix now? Like, three minutes short?
Yeah.
I have one other.
Well, I don't know about your other deal, but the one you talked to me about's very, I mean, 30 seconds.
Okay, we need, we need five, we need five minutes for attorney-client privilege, we have a contract issue, and then we also have a demand by a law firm on some core issues that could lead to litigation.
Okay, so, five minutes?
Five minutes.
Make a motion to an executive session, case A, setting 5-43, 19B2, for a consultation with attorney for the public body or agency to be deemed privileged in the client attorney-client relationship.
Michael, we can't hear.
B3 commissioners and Justin Meeks, be for five minutes, we return here at 7:22.
I will second it.
And a motion to second it, in favor, aye.
Aye.